Grading stormwater.
That is the last thing that we do need to see here is kind of any proposed grading. I mean, this driveway is existing already. That's not changing.
Everything in this clearing is graded.
And is not changing? It remained the same?
Basically. Other than, uh, um, there'd be, you know, clearing for this for the septic over in here. So the driveway coming in here, so the septic would be over here. Some grading over there for that.
Where's our high point here?
It's up here. It all comes down this way.
Down this way. So one of the comments we got, um, our, um, correspondence period was this gentleman right here. When this lot was cleared, he experienced a lot of runoff coming this way. So I'm wondering if there's any way we can get some type of swale, but it, it's gonna basically.
You're gonna have to dump it on somebody else.
Yeah, I mean unless there's really.
If you do a settlement.
It didn't do as well.
And it wasn't the current owner, but it was the prior owner that did all the clear cut.
Yeah.
But I'm just, you know, if you're gonna be in there with excavators digging for the, the house, if there's any way to, to berm this up or create some type of natural barrier for, you know, all this surface runoff to kind of stay within their property and distribute within their property versus.
This is pretty shallow though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. It's like, oh, doesn't seem like this would run that direction so much.
Kind of.
One foot to go that direction.
Yeah.
Oh, there. Two feet.
Yeah.
So this is all basically flat. Yeah. I mean, it's flat from here to here.
Nothing much going on there at all. Yeah. I was kind of surprised that runoff would have been going on to that side. I can see more of it maybe down into here.
But that's, that's once you pass all the disturbance too.
Is this forested or is this open?
Yep.
Got.
It is.
This is, this, so this, this part did not get clear cut here?
Not at all.
No. Didn't go in there.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
As good as it's gonna get right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a stone wall all the way along the edge of this hill too.
So that's, um, clearly was archit as well. Well, we have the driveway length that's labeled. We have the fire apparatus that's taking care of grading stormwater slash erosion control. What do we have the calculated area of disturbance on this? Wait, oh, eight.
Eight, ten, sorry.
Air point eight.
I don't know what she could.
Yeah.
Even without construction, there's gonna be runoff.
He's already pulled it far away from the neighbor and just about can.
You guys wanna come take a, take a peek at this? You guys want to come on over?
I was a little jealous.
No, you guys are always welcome. Please.
Don't know that, you know, so we have.
The guy down here is worried about the runoff, but.
My only thought is if you swell with rip wrap, you can dissipate water back on that. You guys where you swell it and rip wrap it, move water.
Then you could do a wheel.
Trouble is you have to, you have to try to maintain it within this boundary because you don't wanna, you wanna take this runoff and throw it on another neighbor.
Yeah.
Any more than it already is.
You've already, I mean, you've got this stone wall here, which is not, you know, it's not the same as a swell, obviously, but this is, I mean, somewhat damming up whatever you have here.
And what's east of the wall hasn't been disturbed. It's still far.
Anything else you'd have to take to the street.
Runoff in general, gutter drain runoff?
The neighbor was complaining that they did some clearing.
But it's just gonna be open field or is it gonna be from the post structure?
This is basic, it's, no, it's, it's more just because who owned this property previous just came in here to cut all of this out. This is still forested here. But this gentleman right here.
To mitigate anything further, you could isolate the gutter drains and send it into a dedicated weir and then bring it down the.
Down Chestnut Hill.
Send it to John's house.
Yeah.
There is actually a little stream that runs down there. Right to that gray house that they rehabbed and I think it's plenty more water. They could, if it got to be a problem, they could get that to it. It'll be a stretch, but it, you can put a cross pipe. But they're also stone walls too, right?
Yes.
Not on the top of the hill, you're gonna get water. That's all.
Water runs down now.
I can, I can show you.
I mean, the, the only trouble that I'm really running into is how we address this runoff here. That, you know, was a situation that was kind of inherited by the applicant. Without essentially doing unnecessary work, if you will. I mean, it, it's not gonna get any better by adding swales through here. This is, this is flat through here. And where it ended.
Did anybody go out there and look? Is the bank growing back in?
I've only looked at this from the road. I haven't actually gone up in there.
To the bottom of the hill would be suffice during construction?
Certainly during construction, I think that that's a good idea. Yes, um, but.
Then you, then you get a feel for what you're dealing with.
You might not need to do a huge mitigation project. Mitigate construction process project and go from there.
Do you think that would be sufficient to?
You don't really know what you're, I mean, you don't know what you have. So, I mean, you don't have a large project, but you just have the, you know, the comments from the neighbor.
Afraid of as well, afraid of.
But, but the reality is that the, the section of the parcel that's between the post development area and the neighbor is not developed. It's not cut. It's so, I think what Eric is saying, you know, to a certain extent. Depending on the topography, it's either gonna, when you, when you develop the site, the work that you do is probably gonna involve some of it. It's not gonna be running offsite.
So is it the addition of?
I would put in, I mean, you could require some silt fencing.
Yep.
That's, that's.
You can even ask for some socks that way down the bank.
Are you, uh, picking up on all this?
Yep.
Some silt, some silt fencing through construction, um, to kind of, you know, suss out, you know, where this water issue is coming from and hopefully figure it out through the process as to, you know, what can be done to hopefully alleviate this runoff here. Also, you know, part of it is when you have structured, structures and manicured either lawns or plantings or whatever ends up happening around the structures themselves should stabilize some of it, hopefully keep some of the water within the area of development. It's just wide open.
Get the silt fence fills up, you see it.
All right, let's, let's pull up the determination here. We might be able to just work some conditions in here that, that makes this work for everybody. Uh, yeah, we can, we can go past the record here and just get into the whereas. No, you're fine. I just wanna make sure those numbers match up. Okay, one and two, we're good. There's six. Everybody else is satisfied. All right, so we just need to essentially work in a way for actually back up under conditions. Which should be number one, so we'll jump to the top there and.
If you just insert into line number one where payment is.
Yeah, if you click, click before payment and then hit enter, it should just skip every, yes, there we go. We're gonna word this.
You could do at minimum during construction, if not prior, silt fence shall be installed. On the perimeter of the construction site to.
Around the perimeter of the area of disturbance.
Downgrade.
Downgrade.
Downgrade permit, okay. So at minimum at minimum during construction, silt fencing shall be provided for.
During construction, silt fencing?
Silt fencing shall be provided.
Not silt.
Expensive stuff.
Yeah.
It might as well be what it costs these days.
Yeah, but it's really soft.
It is soft and it's black.
Shall be provided for all downgrade, uh, downgrade area of disturbance. That doesn't sound right.
That's the right word.
Down slope.
Down slope.
Yeah, there we go.
I was gonna say, you know, like specify this.
Yep. Jerry, you don't wanna seat up here?
I'm trying to get him to go up there. I said his, his process would go quicker.
Erosion and sediment control is a better.
Okay, yes.
Where are we going now?
Instead of silt fencing, erosion and sediment control. And sedimentation control.
Just add it to the plan there.
Yeah.
Add erosion control.
Notes.
Okay, yes, I'll, I, I think that's probably the most thorough way to approach this. We want you back.
Where you guys get the big bucks.
So I think we can basically strike all that. We're gonna reword it.
Leave it all at minimum during construction, erosion and sediment control plan shall, notes shall be added to.
Well, it doesn't need to be like during, like during construction, saying like, you know.
You can just say erosion and sediment control.
Yes, erosion, sediment control, notes shall be added to the plan.
Right. Cause otherwise, you don't have to do anything about it until construction.
Yes.
You wanna see it on the plan.
Yep.
Yeah, you're just dragging your feet.
Let somebody else do it.
John is pretty thorough with his silt fencing. He doesn't see it down well and I totally understand why.
Shall be.
Provided for.
No, you just shall be added to the.
Shall be added.
Be included on the final.
Not included?
Many cooks.
This is why we avoid committees.
That ZBA only has a few of them.
So take out two and put on the final.
Yes, I'm happy with that. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Right. Any more?
Not meaning to catch Bill at the moment, but you guys, I, I, I think that, that going forward for next year, we should start to think about whether or not you wanna require deed descriptions. So that you don't end up with these maps hanging out there and no deeds.
Just on all.
Yeah, I think that that would be something that we might wanna talk about.
I think that's a good idea.
Legally, all you have to do is refer to the file map.
Yeah, right. You know, so some surveys, I'm finding.
And sometimes it's better. Like, you tell you how many times I turn a description over to an attorney and the secretary rewrites it and they make endless mistakes.
I just Xerox it or I don't touch yours.
Been my experience. I would much rather have a reference to the filed map, the lot number such and such, a file map such and such is filed in the county clerk's office on this date. There's no discrepancies.
I've noticed, I've noticed more.
Chance of error.
Parents aren't doing deed descriptions anymore. They're literally just wanting to reference the maps.
That's the other problem. Yeah, sometimes when you add in preparing descriptions, you'll lose a job because the guy down the road will go.
I prefer to do the descriptions because it's like a final check.
I agree a hundred percent with Bill. I, I'd rather do that, but I don't know if it's something that. Unless, you know, now you want.
That wasn't my intent. My intent was now finding, you know, old subdivisions where the lots were never really created. And they still retain the, the same original deed on file until they start to sell. And then you run into issues.
And we provide a description, it's still going to be the same original deed is on file until the last.
The person decides to violate the description.
Right. You know what happens a lot of times is the clients don't wanna file the deeds because they don't wanna pay any of the lot taxes.
All right, so I'll withdraw my comment. We'll have a conversation.
Conversation for another time.
Right. Conversation for another time. Thank you.
We have a motion to approve the termination.
Removed.
Second?
Second.
Uh, we'll do roll. Aye.
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 So what's first on that, Dave? And Terry, the second?
I was first.
Right down the line. Yep.
All right. That's a special case though.
Yeah.
All right, uh, number three this evening, the lot line adjustment. With the Ricky family, Depew and Canal Road, new application. First, we need a motion to open and accept the application.
Make that motion.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Classify.
Yep. A motion to classify under seeker. This is clearly a type two. Any discussion? Any questions? Motion to classify is type two. Removed. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Terry, you're up.
So the Ricky family has decided that they would like to do adjustments on some lot lines planning for the future. And incorporating the new barn and stable area. And during the, the process, we discovered that there's a garage built a little too close to a boundary line. We count off that. So we wanted to fix that now while we have something for the board. So that would be the parcel C, a little bit of adjustment there with parcel B.
This line right here.
Yep, that right there. And then, uh, parcel B is gonna raise some land over to parcel C to put their pond.
This is the existing line.
Right.
This line's getting removed.
Yep.
Can you come up just a little bit, Laura? This is our new line here.
That's the parcel B. We want to keep that, no, two and a half acres. Really the gist of it, we're just trying to kind of consolidate some improvements onto one lot as opposed to two lots. Put everything together, just this way in the future. There's no issues or questions.
Fair enough. Any discussion from the board? Questions, comments, concerns? Seven?
Just a lot line.
Yeah.
Just a double lot line. It doesn't make any sense. It's not a, it's not really a. Not for a lot line. We can skip this public hearing.
Yeah. And we don't, we don't need public hearing for this. All right.
I mean, it's existing. They're not constructing new homes.
Just moving some lines around.
So there's no proposed, you know.
The property, um, the ninety-six canal, we're talking as a mother sister. The three, three boys and one myself. And the twenty-two brothers, you know, mother and sister and all. So it's just within our own property. We're just trying to correct. And, you know, the reality is where you see the pond area and the access road, the line property. Thirty-two, and all the way to the next, the joint property, where's the car is at in hand. So that's, you know, still the barn, the pastures, there's pasture land in around the pond. And the access road now can be accessed from one of the six canal. Yes, just cleaning everything up. And if that area since part of the development was just above five.
We don't have a determination ready on this. Can't really do the same thing we did in, uh.
Just make a motion to approve the lot line adjustments reflected on the map and prior a final map for signing. There's the, there's no new construction.
It's basically what we did with, um, we did like two months ago. For, if you remember what it was.
Who was our last one? We had one on Spongia, but that was a little bit ago.
Yeah, this wasn't even an LLA that we're, it was one where we basically, we didn't have a determination ready, but it was just so clear cut and straightforward, we went ahead with it. Any discussion of the board on that? I mean, we don't have the.
There's no one complaining. Assume the family's still good, so rip.
So we would just do, you know, whereas there is, there is no new residential construction proposed and the existing lots fully developed. All to approve the lot line adjustment as shown on map. Titled, where you, what's your date, Terry? October twenty-fourth, prepared by Ringler, Terry Ringler.
I will make such a motion.
Yep, yes. There's really nothing to modify this, you know, for a final. There's nothing that's changing.
The only thing we do is set property corners and leaving them out there. The only thing that's gonna happen. Again, they're referenced in the reported document, the mining.
A second? All in favor? Uh, roll.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Real quick, Larry was on the board when I got on this board seven years ago. And I remember listening to the way that he conversed with the public and the way he carried himself. And I always thought like, I just wanna be able to do it the way he did it. So thank you for your guidance through all that.
I'll talk to you. Maybe, maybe it's time you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Larry.
I know that, that my, my issue is, is that I'm, I'm not in this, so like four months in here. So when you think of, like, a sector, a ground, so I'm gonna do something like that.
There's, there's certainly allowances for that now, you know, post-COVID.
Yeah, thanks to COVID.
We, we, if you have the ability to zoom in and, yes, we can, so let's talk. Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it.
And Max is leaving.
Yeah.
One more meeting.
And we ran into each other the other day.
And there was a lot going on in the board back then. I mean, that was a very turbulent time.
Yes.
Put it lightly.
Unfortunately.
Yes. Thank you.
Got it.
Because I didn't, I came on. Yeah, I came on. I really should have like a draft or something.
We need. Meeting schedule and.
Let's roll. Let's roll. Could you hold on for a second? I just, I'd just like to talk to you after the meeting for just a minute, if that's.
Yes.
Good with you. All right, so we just have a couple of, uh, elements, items we need to get through here. An update on ASV. We're still in the extension period and we haven't gotten anything new from them. We did get the slip from them.
What's the end of the, the extension?
March?
So it was six months, so when do we do it in?
Granted on 10/25/7.
10?
Says granted on 10/27.
Yeah, we granted it on 10/27.
April.
I think they're gonna be.
Keep track of that.
Yeah, just to make sure. But I mean, that was.
Plugging along.
And that was really it, I think, was like the SWIP was what we were looking for.
Working on some, or did they get rid of the road maintenance agreement, right? Because they rearranged some lots or something. Feel like, yeah, I feel like they rearranged something, so the road maintenance agreement might have went away. Yeah, I'll have to double check on that, but yes, Nadine dropped off the SWIP on, uh, Friday. So I think, uh, they, they may be ready by next month.
And then these are our 2026 meeting dates. Anybody see anything here that could potentially be problematic? Those dates jump out at me as like a major holiday or anything like that.
That's a pretty quick jump from April to May. Just have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, with the, uh, because of Memorial Day, so that's why we got a bump in May. It's kind of like what we're gonna deal with next month for December. You know, our cutoff is December 1st and our meeting is the 15th. Because of Christmas, we have to bump, right? So, yeah. Usually around Memorial Day, Labor Day, and Christmas is when we have our meetings much closer because of the holiday bump.
I will entertain a motion to accept the 2026 meeting dates.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
And I talked to, uh, the Planning Federation. We can do like a group webinar, like, you know, those webinars that they send out that you can watch at home. Well, we can do it here as a group and watch it as a group, and then I take all of your names and send it to them and they certify it. So I was thinking, four times a year, we should probably pick some dates that we start an hour early to do one of the webinars, and then we don't have to worry about that four hours. Except for Harry and Tracy who go to conference. Oh, Johnny did a one dayer. That's right, I forgot, Johnny did a one dayer.
Why don't you don't bring, uh, vegetable pizza?
And you just got an email today too, for anyone that's slacking, uh, they have a bundle deal. You can get four hours in one shot. You just have to send them an email and we'll send you a bundle of webinars to do in one shot.
We all have two hours this year already, yeah, so we only need to get an additional two hours. We also discussed the possibility of maybe sitting down, well, I guess this doesn't even really apply to me anymore, but like getting the whole board together and just working through a. Potential application, a theoretical application. That could pose some. I guess, some issues, you know, so we, something total, or something that we've looked at in the past, like. Am I gonna name names right now?
I'm thinking that shouldn't be hard to come up with.
But going through one of those and just as a group and counting that as a, yeah, some mock application and treating that as a, as a training as well.
I mean, how heavy is the December meeting? We can.
Well, it's.
Right now.
A show can, or lap, what I should say.
Right, possibly a show can. KSV.
KSV.
And then that's it for right now.
What's our date? I apologize.
December 1st is the cutoff.
No, no, what's the date for our meeting?
15th for December, because we bumped down.
Yes, so we all need to take note of that right now. Our meeting is the, the 15th of next month.
Yeah, because of, uh, Jewish holiday and Christmas, so all that.
Well, the only thing I would. Say would be, um, if people wanted to do it and meet at like four or 4:30 on the 15th. You'd have your full, you'd do our full training, have everything for the year. Be at the end of the year, have, have veggie pizza and move into your evening meeting.
Extra veggie.
So do we want?
Gingerbread pizza?
Get together an hour.
I would say like, I would even, you know, say four, 4:30.
Can everybody be here at four?
No, I, I've got a closing on the 15th. I don't know what time it is, so. It'd be late, I don't know what time.
You got here?
I got my hours. Is it earliest you can get here?
I've, I've got my hours in.
So 4:30 would. Everybody there.
Yeah.
Right?
Let's just do 4:30.
Yeah, the 15th.
Yep. All right.
We're gonna try to get our, do both two hours or still do one hour?
Well, if, if you can't, it's 4:30, it's gonna be an hour and a half.
I think they may, uh, we may do one of the.
Next week I can watch.
I don't, I don't think the Planning Federation's gonna rack us for a half hour.
Well, no, I mean, we can do it out, and do like a half hour mockup, I mean, looking at a plan and talking about it.
Also, I have time next week. I'll watch some of the patch we set down.
Almost could just lie.
All right.
The tubes, John.
Anybody, everybody have a chance to review the meeting minutes from October 2025? Motion to approve the meeting minutes. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Great, thank you.
Laura, can you do me a favor? Why don't we send, um. Mr. Orange Orchard, a reminder. To get their application in early.
So why couldn't we?
I actually have a whole little folder all ready for.
Why couldn't we approve the lot line adjustment? And then sign and, and approve the, the, uh, termination on the 15th.
For this one, you could have.
I mean, is there something to prevent that?
No. Except that now all you have to do is have them drop off the maps and, you know.
Yeah, okay. Just curious.
I mean, if, if there was any development or any issue of where the, where's the septic or where's the driveway or?
Yeah, no, no, I, I, no issue. I just was wondering.
Yeah, no, it could have.
I mean, just instead of having a wing, wing, uh, determination on top of the head, just.
And the only reason for that would be that you're really not doing anything other than saying, whereas there's no, you know.